Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Rodney Payne is here. He's the pastor at Bethlehem Star Baptist Church. He'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Stone if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But would everyone please stand at this time?
Bow with me, please. Lord, we come to you on this blessed day that you have allowed us to experience. We thank you for your goodness, your mercy, and your grace. We thank you for the favor you have shown to our city, and we pray for our leaders, that you would give them wisdom. We pray for those who are assembled here together. And, Lord, we pray that you would just continue to grant your grace to this great city. It's in the name of Jesus Christ we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is becoming something of an annual event, but we try and honor all of our state champion high school athletes and teams, and the Douglas Trojans are back after winning the 3A state championship. Come on up. Let's go. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled up here.
Whereas Douglas High School defeated Starr Spencer 62 to 56 to claim the Class 3A state basketball championship. And whereas Douglas beat Oakmoggi 68 to 60 in the quarterfinals and Oklahoma Centennial 77 to 59 in the semifinal round. Whereas the Trojans ended the season with a record of 21 to 5. The team was led by Oklahoman Little All-City Boys Basketball First Team Member and two-time tournament MVP Coryon Mason. The senior guard averaged 17.5.6 rebounds and 5.5 assists. He also holds a 3.65 grade point average and was active in his school's student government. Whereas seniors Daquan Hopkins and Trey Edwards earned all-state honorable mention. And whereas the Douglas Trojans are no strangers to being honored at City Hall. This is the third state championship in four seasons. Under head coach Kendall Kajoe, overall is the Trojan's seventh title in eight years. Whereas Coach Kajoe teaches his student athletes that education and hard work are the keys to their success off the court, and his players have done an admirable job representing both their school and Oklahoma City. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby congratulate Douglas High School on winning the 2016 to 17 Class 3A state basketball championship.
How about a round of applause for these young men and ladies and coaches? John, I need a motion.
Move the item.
All right, is there a second? All right, cast your votes. Well, how about that? It's unanimous. Coach Kajoe, I can't help but think that, you know, some people are going to start thinking this is easy for you. Seven out of eight years. I know better. I know how early this starts, how long the days are, and starting over with a new team, it's kind of like starting over with a fresh canvas. I mean, you've got to build every season and start doing it again, so congratulations.
I appreciate it. Yeah, you're right. I can look around and I have two young men here that I remember in middle school when I first got the job, and that's Trey and Coryon. And then we have Andre over there, who was also in our middle school program. Then we have kids also that move into the district and become part of the program. So it seems like every year we have to, you know, add a piece of the puzzle and get the right chemistry.
Well, congratulations, and the entire city's pulling for you guys again. Thanks very much. Appreciate you guys. Congratulations. All right, how about another round of applause? Got to go back to school. I know, they aren't in a hurry. I just realized why they aren't in a hurry to get out of here. The bus is warming up. All right, Cindy Smalley. Come on up, Cindy. At the city of Oklahoma City, we have over 4,000 employees. You can imagine how difficult it is to choose one and make that person our employee of the month. We have done that, and Cindy Smalley is the recipient. She works over at the Civic Center Music Hall. How about a round of applause for Cindy? And let's hear all about her. Here's our resolution from the clerk.
Whereas Cindy Smalley has been a city employee for one year and seven months and is the box office supervisor, as well as the interim box office manager for the Civic Center Music Hall. Cindy recently took on responsibilities of manager, ensuring performances, plays, and entertainment brought in by presenters run smoothly from start to finish. Whereas Cindy was instrumental to the training and transitioning of staff, vendors, and presenting companies when a new ticketing system was implemented last year. Whereas Cindy often steps in to handle situations with unsatisfied patrons and promptly resolves the issue to the satisfaction of the customers. Whereas Cindy is a knowledgeable supervisor who cares about her staff, is understanding, considerate, and treats each employee as an individual. Whereas Cindy employees think highly of her and her leadership, as well as her ability to relate to people. Whereas Cindy Smalley is an exceptional City of Oklahoma City employee. This council desires to recognize Cindy Smalley for her dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the city of Oklahoma City. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Cindy Smalley, May 2017, South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
All right. Let's show our appreciation. I'll need a motion in a second. Hold your breath, Cindy. Cast your votes. Ah, it's unanimous. Congratulations. Thank you so much, and let's not waste this opportunity. You and your coworkers over at Civic Center do a wonderful job, but just tell us how proud we are of that facility and the rehabilitation that took place with the MAPS projects. There's some people, believe it or not, that don't go down to the Civic Center much, so here's your opportunity to get people to come down.
They need to come. We have wonderful shows and we have wonderful staff, and we are always glad to see everybody coming, especially when it's their first time to come to the building.
And there's ways online, I assume, to find out what events are coming up?
Absolutely. www.okc civiccenter.com.
And my four-year-old granddaughter Fern is performing in June. I'm sure there'll be a sellout crowd. It's, I think she's in the little theater, as would be appropriate, being a little person herself, but I'll just promote that as one of the opportunities that we all have in the city of Oklahoma City to enjoy the Civic Center. It's for people of all ages, from all over, and as she said, we have world-class entertainment in there, and we'd love for everyone here to be a part of that audience. Thank you. Congratulations on being the employee of the month.
Mayor, while you're coming up, just to remind everybody, we have a three-week run of The Lion King at the Civic Center, starting, I think, on May 9th. So if anybody hasn't gotten their tickets yet, please do so.
All right, looks like we're on item 3C of the council agenda. It's a couple of appointments. I'll look for a motion. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 4 is the Journal of Council Proceedings. 4A is to receive the Journal for April 25th, and 4B is to approve the Journal for April 11th and April 18th. All right, cast your votes on the journals, and they pass unanimously. And item 5 is a request for uncontested continuances.
None this morning.
My goodness. All right. Anybody else? We'll move on to item 6, revocable permits. The first comes to us from the Capitol Hill Main Street. Anyone here from Capitol Hill Main Street? Well, they're going to be holding their Cinco de Mayo and Calidos Cinco coming up on May 5th, as you would expect, being Cinco de Mayo. Probably shouldn't have kept everybody in suspense. Item 6A, Meg, you want to? Well, actually, it's in Ward 4. I thought it was in Ward 6, but it's in Ward 4. Yeah, Todd?
We just, we expect this to be a great event down there, Capitol Hill. If you haven't been down there in a while, is revitalization of it, we believe, has started, and it's just going to continue to improve. So with that, I would motion for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 6A. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item 6B is a request with Hideaway 2 to hold the V-Dubs on Automobile Alley. Anyone here from Automobile Alley or actually with Hideaway? Yeah, come on up. If you'd like to come up and promote your event, we'll give you that opportunity. You must be Rob?
I am.
Yeah, Rob, we'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Rob Crissinger, 8912 South Braden Avenue in Tulsa.
Okay. And tell us about the event that you're going to be holding on May 6th.
Well, this is Hideaway Pizza's 60th anniversary, and as part of that, we're hosting events across the state and in Arkansas to celebrate. Hideaway Pizza has a historic connection with Volkswagen, and so we saw an opportunity to partner with the V-Dub Club of Oklahoma City, Fowler Auto Group, the Spy FM, and the Oklahoma Gazette, and Downtown Oklahoma City, Inc., to start a new event for Auto Alley. And that's the V-Dubs on Auto Alley, and we hope to make it an annual event.
How many Hideaway Pizza locations now?
We have 17 now.
17. And I can remember when there was just one, so that's, congratulations. That's a great Oklahoma business. We appreciate it. We'll need a motion. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thanks for all. You didn't say where that original one was. It was in Stillwater. Okay, good. Sure. In fact, I ran out of a guy once. I was in some other state, and he was saying, his tie to the state of Oklahoma was, "I got thrown out of a hideaway one time." I go, "Yeah? Okay." Most people are thrown out of an Eskimo Joe's in Stillwater, not a hideaway, but I thought it was an interesting way to make his connection to Oklahoma. All right, we're on item 6C. This one comes from McNelly's. Emily, are you here? Great, come on up. They're going to hold the McNelly's Pub Rub, no, Pub Run, on May 6th, North Walker, between 10th and 11th, right there by the location. Tell us about this event, Emily.
This is our seventh year of hosting the Pub Run. It's my personal favorite event that we hold during the year. It's just one afternoon. We get to raise money for Positive Tomorrow's, which is always a fun time. And the best part is you can drink and run. You have to stop to drink, but it's pretty entertaining to watch people down Three Guinness on a four-mile run.
Yeah. Entertainment comes in different forms. All right, McNelly's Pub Rub, Pub Run. I just can't say that. May 6th, and we'll need a motion. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you're doing. All right, we'll recess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are four items. We have a motion in a second. Are any comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Three items today. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on the PPA? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Three items. Motion and a second. Comments or questions on the EAT? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT, reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right, we have a motion and a second. Yeah, Larry?
Items L and V is invictor.
Okay.
Mayor, I had a J, K, and N.
And Mr. Manager, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, M3.
All right. Larry, you want to get started with item L?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. These are some items that I've asked Eric Winger to come up and brief the citizens who are watching on TV and who are here. On, item L involves three neighborhoods with monies from the 2007 bond issue. And then item V is a traffic signal in an area that is of great interest to the folks out in southwest Oklahoma City. So Eric, if you would brief everybody on those, I'd sure appreciate it.
Be happy to do so. Thank you, Mr. Councilman. So the first item, 7L, actually is residential resurfacing and also a sidewalk construction project that's underneath the 2007 bond issue. It's a large contract. It actually has four different groups of contracts contained in it for a total value of about $6.9 million. We found that when we were packaging these up, we were getting far better prices, and we're actually getting better responses from some of our local contractors. And so that's the reason we've moved from bidding these individually to actually putting them into packages. So the work is going to bid in May, and the general construction will begin in July. Now, it will not be located at all locations at once. We'll actually get a phasing schedule from the contractor, but all four major contracts will be finished by December of 2018. So after we get the bids and we have identified a contractor, I can work with you individually on expected schedules for the individual areas. Okay? And then item V is a resolution. So this is a resolution with an agreement between the city of Oklahoma City and ODOT to construct a traffic signal, Southwest 44th and Mustang Road. So as we look at traffic signals in Oklahoma City, there are many cases where these go before the commission and they're approved, however, they're not funded. And so for those projects like this one that did not have funding, we're able to reach out periodically, and ODOT has asked for us to partner with them on the construction of a signal at this location. The convenience of this is that it's an 80/20 agreement, meaning that ODOT will pick up 80% of the cost, city will have 20% of the cost. Estimated total value of the project is $300,000. The city's participation amount with also the engineering is about $80,000, so it's a very affordable project when we work with ODOT on these. And so we're ready with your approval today to proceed with entering into that agreement, finishing up the engineering, and working towards construction on the project, which will be established by ODOT once we get the plans complete.
All right.
Your Honor, may I just ask Eric a question? You know, with ODOT's announcement yesterday of suspension of all or most highway projects, how does this impact us on these smaller-type projects and then also the Oklahoma City Boulevard projects like that?
Sure. So on our smaller projects, our state highway projects, yes, there would be an impact, and we would expect that maybe some of those might be rescheduled. Some of them are in different stages. Obviously, if there's an existing project that's under construction, it would be funded for completion, but if it's something that's in design and not yet bid or constructed, we'd have to work very closely with ODOT on those. Now, the Boulevard project's different. Boulevard is actually federally funded, so the biggest change there is that it's not going to be affected, at least with our discussion with ODOT this past week. And so that project's going to be moving forward as scheduled, which you've just approved an item in the PPA. We expect to see that project still in construction this summer, probably finishing by late 2018.
Thank you.
All right, Meg, item J.
Well, if I could start with N, I'll keep Eric, keep Eric here. And before I even start, Eric, I want to thank you and your team so much for the work over the weekend. I know it was extraordinarily complicated, and I don't think the marathon could have happened if it wasn't for the cooperation of police and fire and public works. I know you were down at the emergency center and meeting with the memorial people, and I really, really appreciate it.
Well, city staff and crews appreciate that, and they've received the message directly from also Carrie Watkins, and so we've put that into the field with her appreciation as well.
Great. Well, thank you for doing that. I just wanted to mention 7N, and this is the plans and specs to be advertised for a new Project 180 package that basically includes North Broadway. And we talked a little bit about that, but this one, it does include West Main all the way up to Robert S. Kerr.
So it does include Main, but it will be bid as an alternate bid, and so it'll be dependent on the pricing that we receive from the contractors. So we're going into this final package of Project 180, and this will be Package 8. And the goal is to use the remaining funds, and so we're looking to expend those. We have designed probably more than the budget's going to allow, but we do want to fully expend Project 180, so we're going to stretch it as far as we can go.
Okay, great. I just wanted to be clear on.
Yeah, these are a little bit different. It's going to be appear the same from the visual standpoint, but we're not going to be going down and doing full utility replacements and such, so it's going to be, if there's some infrastructure that's in good shape, we may not be replacing all of it, but we are trying to match it with the sidewalks and the amenity zones and such. But it's not the full-depth replacement that we've been doing in other areas.
That section of Broadway down to the Cox Center really does need a facelift and lighting, and so I was really glad to see that as part of the package. Six, seven, thanks, Eric. I think that's, 7J, I just wanted to mention, is the public art piece for the municipal courts building, the outside piece. And Robbie, did you want to say anything about it, or just?
Robbie Kinzel, I'm the arts liaison for the city. There will be six elements in this art piece that's been selected, and they represent civic principles, social values, court processes, and community needs, and it's an interactive piece. And once we get through an approval to negotiate and design review and permitting, we think it'll take between 17 and 19 weeks to arrive and be installed. So we will be opening the facility prior to the art being installed.
Have a little visual. It looks absolutely wonderful. It looks like a great piece. Thanks to the committee for doing all that hard selection work. And 7K is a resolution approving submission of a FAST Act grant application, which is Fixing America's Surface Transportation Act. And it also included some great projects in several wards, but in Ward 6, it's looking at sidewalk and intersection improvements on Chertel between 10th and 8th Street, and the potential of the bike and pedestrian bridge that uses the abandoned rail line that spans the Oklahoma River. And consideration of that, both for the bridge and to create a trail on that abandoned railroad corridor. It's not guaranteed, I know, but it is an application that might help us complete that project if we are successful. Thank you.
And John, M3.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manager. Eric, can you just give us a brief overview of 7M3?
I'd be happy to. So M3 is the next series of phased projects on North Kelly Avenue, and so this will include North Kelly, 63rd to Wilshire. I think, as many know, there's a lot of work that's occurred on Kelly. We've actually started as far south as 23rd Street. We'll actually end in about 2019 at Memorial, but there's different components either of resurfacing or widening along Kelly. This is more specifically a widening project at this location. So again, North Kelly, 63rd to Wilshire. It's going to start construction in July of 2017 and finish up in the fall of 2018.
All right, thank you.
All right, ready to vote the consent docket? All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. On to the concurrence docket. Are there any individual considerations? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We're on to item 9. These are items that require a separate vote. We'll start with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward 5. It's an ABC issue at 1609 Penn Park Boulevard Suite 10. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Francis, has anyone signed up?
No.
Okay, this was approved unanimously by the planning commission. There are no protests. I move for approval.
All right, anybody here hoping to speak on item 9A1? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9A2 is a zoning case in Ward 8 at 15124 Leighton's Court. Mark?
Thanks, John. Didn't have my mic on. And I don't know if, is the applicant here today? Yeah. Can you come forward for just a second? This was approved by the planning commission. There are no protests that I'm aware of. There's one thing that was intriguing, and I wanted to know. It said there is no name for this facility. Can you keep, do we have to keep a secret? Can you tell us just us here?
Dave Zimmer, House Smith Restaurant Group, 3101 West Tecumseh Road, Norman. Not a secret, it's still in for trademark.
It's still what?
It's still in for the trademarking.
Okay, okay.
So that's the only reason they don't want to put it out just yet.
Okay, all right. I'd move for approval.
All right, we're voting on item 9A2. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Item 9A3 is a zoning case in Ward 3. It's at 601 North Check Hall Road. It's currently in a planned unit development, and it would be a new PUD if approved. Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Anyone here would like to speak on this? Has anybody signed up?
No one has signed up.
Okay. This was unanimously approved by the planning commission. I move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We're on to item 9A4. It's a zoning case in Ward 4 at 10201 South Anderson Road. It's currently AA agricultural, and it's also in an AE2 airport environs zone, and it would be all put into a new PUD if approved. Todd?
Has anyone signed up to speak on this one? I drove by and looked at it this weekend, and really, I see no impacts here. It's basically a split on a five-acre tract, so with that, I would move for approval.
Right. Anything you want to say? It sounds like you're going to get what you want.
No, sir.
I'd keep, I can keep quiet, too. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Thanks very much. All right, item 9A5 is a zoning case in Ward 4 at 300 Southeast 59th Street. It's R1 single-family, and it would be put into a new PUD. Todd, we're back in Ward 4.
This one's a corner lot. Did anyone sign up to speak and protest? Did anyone want to talk about this item? No? The planning commission recommended approval, and I would motion for approval myself.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 9A5. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9A6 is a zoning case in Ward 6 at 4610 South May. It's currently in a C3 community commercial district and would be put into a new PUD if approved. Meg?
Mayor, has anybody signed up to speak on this one?
No one has signed up.
There were no protests at the planning commission. This is to allow the sale of beer at an existing pool hall, so I would move approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on 9A6. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9B is an amendment to the master design statement. This has to do with some signage. Is there anyone here representing the project 9B? Well, why don't you come on up? We can get some more details. Larry, it's in Ward 3. You may know a lot more about this than the rest of us.
Good morning, Brian Coon, representing the applicant. This is the property out on Frisco and 23rd, between 23rd and 39th Street, that was re-annexed back in Oklahoma City. It's just south of the new Yukon Park. What we plan on doing there is building a commercial center with a water park just immediately south of the park. We've been working with Yukon for probably a year now or more about using their utilities. We've got agreements from them in place that they're going to provide our sewer and water until such time as Oklahoma City extends water to out there. I think it's a great win for Oklahoma City because we're going to have a lot of people at that park, and it puts this land back into Oklahoma City. So I think there's going to be a lot of restaurants and hotels and things like that. This water park is actually being designed by our architects out of Orlando, who do most the work at Disney and Universal. So it will be a water park second to none for this region. So we're excited about it. Yukon has been really great to work with. They've realigned Vannymont Road, and they moved it to come to be where our entrance is, so we can eliminate so many lights. Frisco Road is getting ready to be widened by Yukon. There'll be a new interchange at I-40 and Frisco Road, scheduled to be completed sometime in 19. That's about the time we plan on opening up the water park. So worked with planning commission. They were real, real good to work with. We've worked out our signings. We have a Level 1 sign out on I-40 and no other billboards on the total property. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Brian, just to make sure, the water and the sewer is being supplied by Yukon?
Yes.
And will be done by Yukon until such time, if ever, it's hooked up to Oklahoma City?
If ever. If ever.
And that if ever needs to be, uh, understood by people, because there are no current plans, correct me if I'm wrong, to do that?
That is correct.
And so, you all are happy with, with the arrangement you have with Yukon, and Yukon is also happy?
Yes, and we are building all of our infrastructure based on Oklahoma City's guidelines. So if such time as it happens, but this, this basin serves about, or the basin that this is in has about twenty-four square miles. It would need another treatment plant completely to serve with sewer. They're trying to figure how they can jointly maybe do something and make Yukon's, uh, bigger, so we can get more homes, more things out there, but that's gonna be, so if ever is a good, is a good comment, yes.
And now, since this first came up, and, and enthusiasm had gotten started, uh, Yukon had a bond election dealing with raising funds for that particular area as, as a recreation area, and that bond program failed.
Yes.
Does that impact you all?
They have another, they have another route that they're going now.
So you're in good shape?
We are in good shape.
Uh, has anybody signed up to a protest, or?
No, sir.
I move for approval.
Thank you.
All right, we're voting on item nine B.
We're voting in the amendment.
You're right, we are. Okay, we're gonna have to have two votes here, so we're gonna vote on nine B one first. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And Larry, on item nine B two?
I'll move for approval.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item nine C is an ordinance on a final hearing today. This is to close a ten-foot utility easement in Ward Eight. Mark, you okay with this?
Your Honor, I'm gonna have to recuse myself. Uh, one of my partners is representing the applicant.
Okay.
So if somebody else could move.
Move the item.
All right, is, is there a second?
There's a second.
All right. Cast your votes, and it passes seven-zero. Item nine D is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Looks like we have one person that's signed up to speak. Richard Greenley?
Thank you, Your Honor, Richard Greenley, uh, twelve-twenty Northwest Third Street, Oklahoma City. I'm here with some friends of mine from New View, Oklahoma, and Climate Craft. So, um, there's a, about a three, four-acre structure right down the street from us that's become a hazard to us. It's, there's, anytime, there's twenty to four-hundred, forty criminals that live there, drug dealers, uh, there's been arson, there's been murder, there's been rape, um, and it's, it's become such a nuisance to us that it's, it's inhibiting growth. We have nine properties that we own at Pumps of Oklahoma and surrounding, and, um, it's gotten to the point where our employees don't feel safe going out to their cars. I can't imagine the little families that live around in these small houses and their little kids with these outright criminals. Every time I call the police or the fire department to come out there, they don't wanna go in there because of the open defecation. It's nasty. There's, oh, there's needles, there's defecation everywhere. This has to be, uh, dealt with by the city, uh, to the point where, um, you know, we feel a little bit of frustration. I'll come back from a weekend, and somebody will dump tires or a mattress on one of our properties, and I get a summons, or a, what do you call it, a, a citation, um, not one of the good ones, like the first ones, yeah, the first, at the council meeting, but I get a citation, and I'm like, well, I didn't even know it was there. And then this is there, it's just a, it's a terrible property. Um, the, apparently, the property owner is unresponsive. We've tried to get ahold of him, uh, to, to do something about it. I think it's to the point where, um, we have to, city has to do something about it. I, my, my, the guy that keeps our landscaping and lawn on, on our properties, I had to talk him out of quitting because he's sick of hat, of mowing feces up in, in our area. And I have people coming in from all over the world, coming into this place, and it's not a good representation of, of the city. So I would ask, uh, please, council, um, do something. Condemn this property, tear it down, you could sell it and make, you'd be on the, on the, uh, good side, um, 'cause it's, it's a large property, and it's gonna be very valuable, but it's inhibiting, uh, the growth of our neighborhood, so.
Charles, what can you tell us about it?
He's right. We, we, we're, the reason we're really re-bringing this to council, because the property has been condensed into one, used to be two separate, uh, parcels, um, so basically, we're asking you to, uh, go ahead and, and declare it dilapidated as just one property now.
Okay, and there are other city departments, I assume, working in, in the wake of Charles's work?
Mayor, Mr. Greenley called me about a month ago, and I had been down and look at it. I told James, it's my Lantana apartments in the middle of the city, um, but it's worse than Lantana. It's really like Mad Max. It, it's as frightening, or more frightening than he has described. Um, we, there, there is someone kind of looking around that's interested in maybe buying the property. Um, I'm not sure whether that's gonna happen or not, but we have convened a team of our legal counsel, uh, Dan Brummett.
Police.
Police Department was there. We're working, and this is the first step. The issue is, you know, we're gonna need dollars to tear it down, but.
Right, this is the old Robertson Steel facility down there, and parts of it have been, are, are broken off and, and have survival, uh, businesses on both the east side and the west side of it, but the, the middle side, the middle part of it, which is, is a large structure, uh, is the problem area that we're talking about today. All right.
And it's impacting Lawrence, um, folks at the, at New View. People are frightened to get in and out of their cars. I mean, it's, it's having a much bigger ripple impact at this point, and it's a neighborhood that's also trying to redevelop. Joe Stack, Terry, your wife, Terry and I were at a party immediately behind the property just a couple of weeks ago for Allied Arts. And so, it's a neighborhood that's trying hard, um, but this is a real impediment to anything else happening, and so.
All right, well, let's get the process started. Richard, thanks for your patience and your willingness to get involved.
So declaring it dilapidated, is that, is that on the road to getting it condemned, or is that?
It's the process, yeah. Yes, as she mentioned, ultimately, there may be some dollars that have to be gathered up to continue the process, but this is a, this is a perfect start.
Okay, great, thank you, I appreciate it, council.
You bet. All right, how about a motion then on item nine D?
Seven.
Second.
All right, anyone here hoping to speak? Property owner that has the courage to come up at this point? Apparently not. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right, item nine E, public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on any item listed under nine E?
Two votes.
All right, cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Item nine F is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on any item listed under nine F? All right, no one has signed up, so we have a motion. Is there a second? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item nine G is a public hearing regarding the removal of a property from an abandoned building list. Anyone here hoping to speak on this item? All right, how about a motion on nine G?
Second.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item nine H, uh, do we need executive session on this item, Jim?
We.
Okay, we don't. How about a motion then?
Second.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item nine I, do we need executive session on this item?
No.
All right.
This is the, uh, uh, street vacation. We're initiating the process to vacate the streets in the area for the new convention center. We've acquired all the property down there now, and we'd like to close the, the street right away.
All right.
Move the item.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And we're ready for items from council. Mark, you have anything for us?
Uh, just briefly, I'm having trouble today with this microphone. Just briefly, I, I wanted to announce that a hundred-and-sixty-fourth Street between May and Highway Seventy-four is officially striped and open for business, and, uh, that helps a lot of people get to the highway quicker, and it's a really nice addition to northwest Oklahoma City. And then also our, uh, senior wellness center at Rockwell. Um, we had ninety-four new memberships yesterday, and we are almost about to hit the magic two-thousand number of members.
It's amazing.
Yep. I'm really excited about it.
All right, should be, yeah. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna thank City Crews and also OGN E for working hard to get people's power back up and, um, and areas cleaned up. Um, a portion of Ward Seven was hit pretty, um, bad. So again, I just wanna thank, um, city staff and also OGN E. Thank you.
Meg?
Yeah, Mayor, I need to reiterate that as well. Saturday morning was a real surprise, lots of people when they woke up, and, you know, I, there were so many things going on. It's an absolute miracle that none of the tents were lost at the arts festival. Artists, you know, I think actually had a pretty good arts festival, all things being equal, but the crews from Parks and Rec, and the police and the fire, and we had private contractors out working in city neighborhoods, Jefferson Park and Sparrow Park. OGN E did an amazing job, and, you know, to, to be able to host a run of just short of twenty-seven thousand runners, uh, a couple of hours after that storm was an amazing feat. So, I just think everybody needs to be, um, so commended for the work they did. How'd you do on the walk? Did you, you did the project?
I passed four people, and I think, uh, there were like thirty thousand that passed us, but. We finished.
Great. It really was a great event, and I just, you know, it, to me, it looked like the Oklahoma Standard all over again. People just, everybody came together to make sure it was gonna work and work well, so.
Yeah.
Thank you to everybody involved.
Great coordination between a lot of people.
Amazing.
Yeah. David? All right. Todd?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention, uh, a couple items that are happening in Ward Four this weekend, the Cinco de Mayo Festival on Twenty-fifth Street, and, uh, the bike race out around Draper Lake on Saturday the sixth.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Um, I'd like to just give a little more information that Eric was sharing about the work that's gonna be done in some neighborhoods between now and the end of the year. In Ward Three, those neighborhoods, Windsor Forest is one of the neighborhoods that will be getting their streets resurfaced and the sidewalk on one side, and then also the neighborhood south of, uh, Woodson Park and, uh, west of May will also be getting it, and I know those people will be very excited about that. Thank you, Your Honor.
Uh-huh. James? All right, Jim, you wanna talk about the storms and the coordination, twingear departments? It was just extraordinary work.
I would like to do that at the end of the presentation. Chris Bronny's gonna come in and talk to you, and we're gonna spell out what our, our recovery plan's gonna be at that point.
Right.
If you don't mind, but we'll, if we can do the other two presentations first.
Absolutely, go ahead.
So first up is Mike Carrier to talk to us about CVB.
Mr. Couch, council, mayor, good to see you all again. We have completed three quarters of our fiscal year, and, uh, I'm pleased to report to you that business in the travel and tourism industry continues to be good. Uh, we are continuing to see a, a lot of interest, uh, a lot of activity, and so, uh, hopefully, as, uh, the economy continues to creep to recovery at least, and we're not expecting huge, uh, numbers, uh, to jump at us, but certainly, we are seeing improvement, and, and that's a good thing. So, uh, we'll run through this real quickly. Our convention sales, uh, which is, uh, one of our major areas, through three quarters, uh, our sales leads, which is the pipeline of future business for Oklahoma City, three-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand, uh, almost four-hundred-thousand hotel room nights, uh, up about a half a percent from last year. So, again, we are seeing, uh, consistent, uh, interest and increases. Uh, we've got pieces of business as far as twenty-one and twenty-two looking at us, particularly for the new convention center, right now, about twenty-five or twenty-six solid pieces of business that are very interested in the new convention center, uh, awaiting, obviously, more information, uh, relative to the headquarters hotel and things that are in process. So, uh, we'll be, uh, coming hopefully to you in the not-too-distant future to, uh, to share with you some, uh, successes, uh, once we can get to sign some of those folks. Um, future room nights, uh, we're, uh, a hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand. These are definite pieces of business. These are pieces of business that have already signed contracts, uh, seventy-four percent of our goal of two-hundred-and-five-thousand. Uh, again, many of the pieces of business we're working on right now are, are well out into the future, and, uh, we're, we're con- continuing to recruit more of those. Servicing of groups, these are groups that are, uh, actually here in Oklahoma City for a convention. We're providing some level of service to them in a variety of ways in cooperation with our hotels, our facilities. Uh, goal of, uh, uh, of two-hundred-and-forty this year, we've already hit two-hundred-and-seventy-five, uh, so, you know, a hundred-and-fifteen percent of our goal, uh, we're, we're well on the way, uh, to having another successful year. Group tours, uh, three-hundred-and-eighty-nine groups, uh, these are motor coach groups, uh, that have come to Oklahoma City during the first three quarters of this year. Fourth quarter, spring, is typically a, a very good time of year for this activity, so we're looking forward to seeing more, but a sixteen percent increase over last year. Passengers unfortunately are down just a little bit. We've seen more groups, but fewer passengers, uh, in each one of these, uh, coaches that has come through, uh, seven percent decrease over last year, but again, we are just now entering the time of year when we really begin to see, uh, some good numbers from this. Uh, booked room nights, uh, again, down just a little bit on this, so, uh, we hope to pick back up, uh, on that one as we move through. Uh, our biggest segment of the industry is equine. We are just now getting into the horse show season. Uh, you were talking about the fairgrounds. We had a barrel racing event, uh, this past weekend at the fairgrounds, and while Saturday was not a good day for barrel racing, Sunday was, uh, and, uh, it was interesting, as I walked into the arena Sunday afternoon, uh, of course, they play music constantly during these things. As I walked into the arena, just going up the steps, the song Riding the Storm Out came on, and the announcer said, "Well, there's our theme song from Saturday," and the score on that horse never missed a beat, went right on, sat there and watched about a hundred-and-eighty horses over the next hour and a half running barrel racing. So they continued right on with their program, and, uh, between the city's folks and the, and the fairground folks, uh, they did a tremendous job of getting the facility back open, uh, and allowing these folks, as well as other, uh, activities that were going on out there, to continue. And, uh, and I can tell you that the people at the barrel races were, were appreciative, but they were having a great time. You know, so it, uh, it worked out very nicely for us. Uh, direct spending, uh, from our equine industry so far, uh, shows that are, that have been here, but shows that are continuing on into next year, and we have a number under contract, uh, about a hundred-and-fifty-three million dollars of direct spending, uh, toward a goal of about a hundred-and-eighty-five million dollars. Marketing and communications, how we're telling our story, uh, social media, digital media, all of those things continue, as I've said before, to be more and more prominent. Uh, our website visits, uh, up by twenty-three percent this year. Uh, some of that is because we have gone to a responsive website that works on all platforms, so this is, no matter where you are looking at it, it works, uh, and the numbers continue to increase. Uh, stories that we pitch, we still work with travel writers. Uh, they don't print stories like they used to. Now many of them are bloggers, or they are all social media or, uh, digital media of some type, but this goes to show the amount of interest that there is in Oklahoma City. A hundred-and-one stories, uh, pitched this year that have actually had something done with them, two-hundred-and-ten percent of our goal. And this is always sort of a, uh, it, it's sort of a guesstimate as to what you can do, because you have to, you have to fight against other cities to get people's interest, you know, and so as more and more things happen here, we're finding that to be a little bit easier, and so hopefully, that will continue. Obviously, the approval of the final plan for the convention center has received some significant interest in the meetings industry, uh, since council gave that approval, and significant interest in the meetings industry since council gave that approval and as we move forward with the bids, the groundbreaking in next fiscal year, that will continue to garner interest for Oklahoma City. Tax collections, we are down. You all see those numbers as well as we do. The big challenge we have right now is the average daily rate. We are in fact, through the first three months of this year, we have sold more hotel rooms than we sold last year. Unfortunately, the average rate is less than what it was because we are now having to sell rate as opposed to services in order to get some of this business into some of the hotels around the city. So we expect that to come back. We know that there is interest from a lot of hotel companies that are looking at either the current building of properties or the future building of properties and they all have expectations of the rates increasing. So we'll be looking forward to that as we move into next year and continue to get out there and sell Oklahoma City. Consumer show interest is still high. We have just gone through consumer show season and the responses we've gotten at the consumer shows has been extremely positive. So with River Sports Rapids, with things happening at the zoo, at the science museum, at all of our different attractions around the city, now that hopefully the weather has gotten to the point where we don't have to worry about snow or the extremely cold weather, but people can get out and do things, we'll see increased traffic into Oklahoma City as we move into the spring. So be happy to answer any questions as always. We appreciate your support. We are very proud to be representing the city and selling this community as a travel and tourism destination and appreciate what you folks do to support us.
All right. Mike, thanks. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next, we have Doug Dollar to do our preliminary presentation on the fiscal '17-'18 budget. This is a high-level look today. We're obviously going to spend three weeks, in the next five weeks, going, having budget meetings and going through the budget in much more detail. But this is a, this morning, we wanted to pass the budget out to you, go over some of the highlights and go over in detail what's in the budget at least.
Well, good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm pleased to be here and I've got some of my leadership from the office here with me as well. Our analysts are off at training, but Joanna McSpadden is over LFR, Susan Cruda is over revenue, Christian York is over our operations budget and Erica Van Der Syppen is over the capital side of things. And so really appreciate their work and their contribution to the office there. So again, earlier in the meeting, we adopted the, or introduced the budget and set the hearings and so during this, I'm just going to kind of give a brief overview and then we'll kind of take a look at the book and what's in it. We've got some changes in it from what we've had in the past and I'll talk through those as well. So as we look at the big numbers for the budget here, overall, our budget's $101,377 million. And when we look at the various categories within the budget, you'll see some significantly different growth rates. So the general fund, when we're comparing back to our FY '17 amended budget, is down slightly at $404.5 million. Our operating funds are up about 1.7% at $238.1 million. The main reason there is an increase in water and wastewater utilities of about $3 million. When you look at the non-operating funds, you'll see those are up significantly and the reason there is MAPS III. At this phase in the program, they've got a lot of things in process. They've got funds encumbered for things like the streetcar and that kind of stuff, but they haven't spent a great deal of money at this point.
In general, if you take a look at it, that's about one year's worth of collection. So we're banking and it's because we haven't spent that much money yet on the modern streetcar. We're starting to spend some money on it. We're going to be bidding the park out next week and then of course, after the first year, we'll be bidding out the convention center. But it's, it's, so we're, it's the way MAPS works, the MAPS formula works, is you bank the money before you spend it. So we're in the banking process this year and adding about $100 million to the fund balance.
Yeah, and so what you'll see when, if we look specifically at the MAPS budget, it's $305 million in the current year, it's $453 million in FY '18. And again, it's that balance that's been accumulated over the years that's being budgeted for projects in the coming year. I'll also note, in the non-operating funds is where we've budgeted the new impact fee fund, the impact fees that were adopted earlier in the year. We're adding those into the budget for next year and that's $9.4 million that we've got added in there. So as we look at position changes, this year's a really complicated story to tell on our position changes. We've got a lot of things that make it difficult to get an even comparison from year to year. And so one of the things that we've got in here that complicates things is in the current year in FY '17, we froze 48 police and 21 firefighter positions in hopes that this would be a temporary lull in the economy, we'd be able to put those back. We're not able to fund those in the FY '18 budget. So those will remain frozen in FY '18. Another unique circumstance is the move of nine positions from fire dispatch to police and their 911 operation. We had planned to do that in the current year. We weren't able to come to agreement with the IFF on that option and so those positions moved back to fire. So again, that kind of distorts, it looks like fire's going up by nine, police is going down by nine.
They were never actually moved. It was our plan to move them and so we moved them in the budget, but we never moved them. So those positions are unchanged. So we moved the nine positions on paper, but never actually moved the positions and now we're moving them on paper back to where we started.
Right. So again, that's another complicating factor there. In the fire department, the cuts include taking Engine 51 out of service. And this is an engine that's at Station One downtown and provides a second apparatus to calls in the downtown area. Now, fires applied for a grant that would restore the positions and my, our understanding is they have a very high likelihood of gaining that grant, but that wouldn't be available until October 1st to restore funding for the Engine 51. In addition, they've applied to fund those 21 frozen positions through the grant and that would staff the new fire station in southeast Oklahoma City if we get the grant. The grant would pay for 75% of the cost of the positions in the first two years and 35% in the third year. So we don't have those in the budget because we haven't received word yet that we've received the grant. Our understanding is though that that's a highly likely scenario. So in the police department, their reductions include a cut of six vacant patrol positions and in addition to the 15 that were reduced in the current year. And again, the nine positions from dispatch makes that look a little worse, makes it, makes it look like 15, I should say there. Fire is down to net of seven position. Again, the dispatch distorts that position because it's 15 positions to take Engine 51 out of service. As we look at the other departments that had significant changes, development services saw a net decrease of seven positions in this budget with reductions in code, animal welfare and the development center. Another area where the picture is complicated is the utilities department. They added 13 positions and made significant organizational changes. And so when Chris Browning is here to present the utilities budget, they'll talk more about that. But utilities also funded some positions in IT, general services and personnel to provide a higher level of support to the utilities. Another significant change with utilities, that's connected with utilities, is through AquaWatt, they're going to contract with Parks and Recreation to provide mowing and maintenance services on AquaWatt property. They used to do this themselves, now they're going to contract with Parks to do that service. That resulted in an increase in 10 position in Parks. So Parks looks like an increase of two positions. They actually cut eight positions in their regular budget, but this addition of 10 puts them at a positive two. So again, another complicating factor in the positions this year. Finally, as we look at IT, their positions are skewed just a bit. They added four positions that are funded by utilities for their supervisory control and data acquisition or SCADA system that monitors all of the utilities' infrastructure. In addition, they have a position that was funded in the radio shop that's funded by the users of our radio systems such as Bethany, Mustang, War Acres and Yukon. And then they have one position that's going to support the development center as part of a new insulation inspection fee that'll be coming before council in the coming weeks. So as we look at other departments, there are some minor changes, some ups and downs, but the net is a reduction of 16 positions overall for the city. So as we look at the next slide here, you can see our positions are down 16, that's about 0.3%. If you look at the last couple of years from our peak there in FY '16, we're down 99 positions from where we were two years ago. In addition to that 99% reduction, there are 69 positions that are frozen that are not funded for a total of 168 less positions available for service to our citizens in the FY '18 budget as opposed to FY '16. Now, there's been some particular interest in sworn positions in the police department and as we, as this graph demonstrates here, by FY '16, we'd added 145 positions from the low point in FY '11. Unfortunately, the downturn in the local economy has been a reduction of 25 positions from that maximum number and an additional 48 that are frozen. So that's really cut in half the progress we'd made and brings the increase in positions available down to 72 from the 145 that we'd achieved in FY '16. So as we look at the budget process and where it fits in with our strategic planning process, this is just a key piece of our overall process. We begin each year with our citizen survey that we're doing this year, they'll be coming out in July. That kind of directs council priorities, which last fall were updated and then that guides the departments as they prepare their business plans. They put together their budgets that get sent to the Office of Management Budget and City Manager's Office to review those and that brings us to the proposed budget that's before you. Of course, as we go through the year, we have the activities that are funded by the budget, but we're collecting data on how those are going. We report on results regularly to the City Manager's Office and the mayor and council. And then we're looking at, you know, evaluating our progress, making decisions about what we need doing forward. So the budget process really gives city leaders, both management and council, an opportunity to see what we've accomplished, what we want to get done and evaluate the resources we're using to achieve those priorities and goals. And so with that in mind, I just thought I'd do one more time a look at the council priorities that were just adopted by council earlier this year. Those are promote a safe and secure, I'm sorry, promote safe, secure and thriving neighborhoods, develop a transportation system that works for all residents, maintain strong financial management, enhance recreation opportunities and community health and wellness, encourage a robust local economy, uphold high standards for all city services, continue to pursue social and criminal justice initiatives. And you can see the icons that we've got next to each of these priorities and you'll see those throughout the budget book in the areas that support those priorities. So as we take a look a little bit more detail at the budget, revenue is what drives our total and so we'll take a look at revenue first. What you can see here is our total budget again of $1,377, I'm sorry, $1,377 total. The largest recurring revenue source is taxes. They total 508 million or 38% of the total. Sales tax is the largest category, sorry, sales tax is the largest source in that category is over $411 million. And when we look at the overall budget, the taxes category also includes property taxes which fund our debt service, which total $85 million. Fees and charges include things like franchise fees, building permits, ambulance membership fees, stormwater drainage fees. That accounts for 13% of the total. Transfers income from the public trust that provide the operating costs for water, wastewater, solid waste and airports. Those are about 5.7% of total. Other revenue includes things like interest, revenue, lease revenue miscellaneous sources and that's about 2.4%. And then federal grants make up about 3% of our total budget at 45.6% or 45.6 million. So fund balance represents the largest revenue source this year at 38.2% or 525 million. And as we talked about, the MAPS III sales tax fund represents three-quarters of that total. That's why we've broken that out as its own slice here, separate from the other fund balance. The remaining funds contribute $141 million in fund balance, but the next largest in our capital improvement fund is about one-tenth the size of that MAPS III fund balance at $40 million. And I would say here, the large increase in the fund balance is one of the reasons why we separate out operating versus non-operating funds when we total up the budget. With our MAPS funds, as we've done them in the past, they build up this large balance that really can distort the growth in our budget. And so we want to break out the operating side that provides the direct services to citizens and show really how citizen service is being affected by the budget, separate from these cash balances. Again, a lot of folks will often say, "Oh, well, why don't you use the MAPS money to help pay for something else?" Well, we can't. I mean, that's, the citizens voted for that to go for a specific purpose and we want to make sure we're keeping those separate and we keep the totals separate there for that operating versus non-operating budget. So as we kind of zoom in a little bit on the operating budget, you'll see it's $642.6 million and again, taxes are the largest revenue source with sales tax, again, is $308 million of that total. The other taxes in the category include use tax, hotel motel tax and the pieces that we get from the state for things like tobacco, alcohol, motor fuels and commercial vehicle tax.
And just for, excuse me, for a reminder, the operating revenues, the operating funds is basically the general fund plus the public safety sales tax plus water and plus airports and a few other things.
Right. That's the, that's the. Those are the big ones. Yeah, you'll see it's $642 million is our operating revenue. As we go to the next slide, our general fund, which makes up two-thirds of that, is $404.5 million. That's obviously the largest piece of our operating budget.
Doug, excuse me, could I ask you a question? Now, I'm jumping ahead, but if you look at page B14, it shows sales tax declining from 16 to 17, it declined, but yet our use tax increased. Normally those follow.
Well, there's two factors at play there. One is we're comparing the budget for FY '17 to our budget for FY '18. As you're aware of, we're, our sales tax has not come in as high as we had thought in the current year. So we're actually going to end the year with less sales tax than we projected. So we are projecting growth next year in sales tax of about 2.5%. Unfortunately, because we fell below our estimates, that it's not showing much of an increase there on sales tax. With use tax, there is some growth there and the other piece that's coming into use tax is the amazon.com revenue will flow through use tax, not through sales tax because they're an out-of-state company. And so we do anticipate $3 million from Amazon coming into use tax.
That's correct. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. So again, we kind of looked at the general fund here and our revenues, again, $404.5 million. And again, we're comparing budget to budget as opposed to our actual revenues, which does make for a little bit of difference, especially in a year when we came in below what we expected. As we look at the expenditures, again, at the big level of our total budget, $1.377 billion. These are the categories that are outlined in the Municipal Budget Act. Normally, personal services is the largest category or what are paying for our people. But again, with the large increase in the MAPS III sales tax budget, you can see that capital outlay is now our largest source when you combine MAPS III and the other areas. And again, the other categories are relatively minor at 12% or less. When we look at the operating budget, now all of a sudden you really get a picture of people are our largest expense for our operations. Personal services are 70% of the budget, again, supplies at 5.5%, services like utilities and those sorts of things at 15%. Transfers are 8.3% and then capital 0.7% in the operating budget. When we look at the general fund, it even becomes a little bit slightly more pronounced, personal services at 73%. 20% for other services includes utilities as I mentioned, but also things like our payments to COTPA, charge backs for internal service funds for like IT, fleet, risk management and print shop, supplies, capital and transfers are very small. And we, out of the general fund, we transfer $4.25 million to our capital improvements fund that funds capital, but from the general fund, it looks like a transfer expense there. When we look at it by area of service in the general fund, public safety is of course the largest piece at 64.6%. General government's at 8.5%. Public services, the second largest category at 17.3%. That includes public works, development services and planning. And then culture and recreation in the general fund is made up of Parks and Recreation and the cost for operating the Cox Convention Center and the Chesapeake Energy Arena. So as we develop the budget each year, there are standards and best practices we follow. Obviously, we follow the state law for our budget and you'll see that when I go through the budget book, the fund summary section is the piece that actually is adopted by the council. That's the official budget. But we provide a lot of other information in the budget document as well to meet the standards of things like the Government Finance Officers Association and their guidelines for their distinguished budget presentation award. Each year, we submit our budget for review. We receive their distinguished budget presentation award again this year. Only five entities within the state receive that and this is actually our 29th year to receive that recognition. So with that, I'll take a look here at the budget book. Obviously, the first thing that you'll notice right off the bat is we've got two volumes instead of one this year. And what we've done is we've separated out our performance, kind of our LFR data into a separate volume so we could provide a little bit more data to you, a little bit more information, but in a little more condensed format. So actually with these two volumes, we're actually about 70 pages shorter than we were in the past and we're actually providing more information on performance than we have in the past. So I'd be curious to get your comments and reaction after you've had a chance to look through it to see whether this is, this is a good idea or not. So we're still kind of reviewing this and hoping that this will end up being a better product, but we'd like your feedback on that. So as we look at the larger size book here, we've got tabs on here. The introduction provides the message from the manager, some LFR data and kind of overview data of the major budget changes and of the city. Section B is our financial summaries and that's what, as I mentioned, is the piece that will actually officially be adopted. And so if you take a look at one of the pages, oh, I'm sorry, financial summaries is the overview of revenues and expenses. Fund summaries is what's adopted. I got ahead of myself. So the financial summaries provides again, a quick overview of the revenues and expenses in each fund. And then we provide a detailed look at each department's budget and we go through and look at the changes that they've had there, their programs that they provide and the number of positions that they have in each program. We'll have departments coming to present their budgets. We'll have nine different departments presenting and so they'll go through their sections there and talk about that. The fund summaries, as I meant to say earlier, is what is officially adopted. And so I might point you to say the general fund, which starts on page D19 of the section, you'll see the Municipal Budget Act requires us to break out each fund into its own separate section, identify the revenues that it's to receive and then have the expenditures broken out by department and then by these five categories, personal services, other services, supplies, capital outlay and transfer. And so you'll see that's how we've got the budget organized for each fund. We've got a little description of each of the funds in that section. Section E provides an overview of the capital that we anticipate funding in the coming year and some description of the projects that are slated for the coming year. And then our appendix has our financial policies, glossary and some other charts there as well. Then this attachment or this other volume here on performance, again, is organized by department and provides the issues that the departments have addressed, that they're looking at over the next two to five years, the strategies that they're incorporating to address those issues and then the results that they're tracking to see how they're doing against those issues. And then we've got each of their programs and the measures associated with that program. So there's a lot of data here from each of the departments and there's a lot of performance data in here to give you an idea of what departments are producing with the money that they're receiving through the budget. So with that here, I'll go and look at the schedule for the next So with that here, I'll go and look at the schedule for the next six weeks here, basically. Next week, we've got development services, public works, public transportation and parking will present. And then in two more weeks, IT, police and fire, and then finally airports, parks and utilities. At each of those meetings, we're going to have an opportunity for public comment. And then on June 13th, we'll have the official public hearing and budget adoption on June 13th with the budget to begin on July 1st. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great.
So if I could summarize this a little bit, what are the takeaways? The takeaways are that it's not a great budget year. Our general fund budget is $404 million. It was four years ago, it was $404 million. So that's, I think, one of the takeaways. Two is that we're eliminating 16 positions, but we're also having the public safety positions that we froze last year will continue to be frozen. We are optimistic on, in the future a little bit. We've, we've all sat through Russell Evans' presentation. We believe the economy will turn around. We do believe that, that we would project it a 2.5% increase in sales taxes as we go forward. We've got more money in use tax, as Councilman Greenlaw pointed out, because we do have Amazon revenue projected into, into the use tax as we go forward. But even with that, it's a flat budget. Our city continues to grow, but our, but our general fund budget is the same number as it was four years ago.
If we ran short of money, could we issue bonds to get us through until next year?
I don't know what the state law would be in terms of issuing bonds for operations. I think they're fairly strict that they have to be for capital, but I'd have to defer to legal counsel.
General obligation bonds?
Any kind of bonds.
Well, we could, we could certainly come up with a, a way to borrow some money if we, we need to, although our, our fund balance right now is 13.
Yeah, we're, we started the year at a little over 14.5%, 14.7% is a reserve that's available there. We probably will spend down a little bit of that this year, but I, I think the expenditure cuts that we've made and changes we've made, it, it won't be a significant spend down on, on the fund balance.
So if it's 13% on a $400 million general fund, it's, it's $52 million in reserve.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, the reason why they suspend those ODOT projects, if the plan is at the state level is to save money, issue additional term pipe bonds and then use those funds for their general fund operations? And I think they did it last year.
You're, you're trading current year expenses for future debt?
Yeah, that's the concern I have at the state level. Now, I don't think we would ever do anything like that, but I guess it's okay to do that kind of stuff at the state level in lieu of, you know, finding alternatives to balance your budget.
It seemed like there was a commentary in there somewhere. I'm not, someone to pick out, pick it out. All right. Anything else for Doug? All right, Doug, thanks for all your work. Please thank your staff for these great documents and I hope the, the media and the citizens who are interested have a chance to access it and go through it because it really is an impressive document. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
And obviously, we had a storm event over the weekend. We had about 2.5 inches of rain that fell on Friday night, depending upon where you were in the city, and another inch that fell through Saturday, about 3.5 inches coming down. It didn't come down with a real heavy intensity of rainfall. So although, I'm sure there were some flooding places in, in, in some areas, generally flooding wasn't an issue. We didn't have large-scale flooding issues as, as we went forward. On Friday night, early Saturday morning, there was some heavy winds that came through. And it was actually a fairly narrow band that came through and it came through roughly from the fairgrounds to Penn, 23rd and Penn, up to OCU, a little bit north of OCU. And then kind of if you draw a line over to 36th and Kelly and then kind of along Kelly, uh, 36th Street further to the east, if you can envision that, that's, that was the main thrust of, of, of the, of the wind damage. Although there was wind damage, a lot of limbs were down in that area, not a lot of property damage. And again, there is some property damage and if it's your property, I, you know, I don't want anybody to be offended that I'm saying there's not a lot of property damage, but compared it to some tornadoes we've had, in the lot, it was, it was, it was not great property damage. Of course, if it's your property damage, it's, it's significant. And outside of the limbs being down, the major issue was loss of power. And we had loss of power to thousands upon thousands of people. I think I saw this morning that it's under 1,000 people in the Oklahoma City area that still don't have power, although it's greater than that in other parts of the state on it. So our staff over the last, well, last days, after we did the initial recovery of, of putting stop signs up, but, you know, where we had lost power at, at intersections and getting stop signs back up and, and unplugging inlets and, and clearing the roads of debris and of course, helping prepare what we could for the marathon, after we got through the, the initial response, now we're taking in, in recovery mode. So yesterday, we spent some time looking at, at the best way to recover and, and Chris Browning is here to talk about our plans for recovery at, at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Couch, and good morning. When I, when I first came to Oklahoma City, I was told that we're the sixth most windy city in the nation. And so this weekend, I found out what that meant. So we had, we kind of had a hurricane come through the city. As Mr. Couch indicated, we've gone out and done an assessment through the city and the, the storm started about Mustang and then intensified as it came northeast through the city. There's a, a primary area that was impacted from MacArthur down to, let me see, MacArthur east to Eastern or maybe Bryant and then from 50th to Reno. That's the high-impact area. There was about an 80 mi, 80 square mile area that, that solid waste staff, public work staff and emergency management staff went out and, and evaluated yesterday, primarily yesterday. They got 66 of the 80 square miles. And what we found is, is those areas to the southeast have, have little, very little storm damage. The primary areas of the damage, as you look at the map, are going to be in that, that area that I just identified, where we have up to nearly 500 tons of debris in one square mile. Those were the most heavily impacted areas. Now, good news, bad news. Bad news, we have heavily impacted area. Good news, it's, it's isolated. So we, we've taken a look at our resources and what we believe to be the, the, the high, high-impact area. And, and we're pretty sure that with our current resources, with our staff and with our contract operator, we can manage the debris pickup within the normal bulk waste pickup schedule. Now, there are some outliers and we may have to go back and, and get a pile here and a pile there, but we fully anticipate that we can pick up everything by the end of the month. So it's not going to be a long-term process. Now, as we go along, people are going to be pulling out things that we don't know about and it may take us an, an extra week or so to, to pick it up. But if we have to, we can go out there on Saturday as well. But right now, we think we can get it done within the normal pickup schedule. So if you all have any questions about, about what's happened and what we intend to do about it?
So what we're going to do is we're going to be picking up large volume tree branches and such in the area that's in the red. If it's, if you're not in the area in, within the red, you're just going to have to handle through your big, your, your, your normal large trash pickup, pickup schedules as, as we go forward. If you are in the area in, in, in the red, then we're not going to have the size limitations and such. We're going to go in there and do what we can to clean out. It's very hard to estimate damage because we can go through, but we don't know what's in backyards and, and sometimes we get into some areas. So Chris is, is going to work on a contingency plan and very, watch this very closely. And if it appears that we've underestimated the tornadoes, we talked about that this morning. I'm not sure we've ever overestimated tornado damage. It always seems that there's always more than we, we think that's there. Then we're going to come back and bring in a third-party vendor to help assist us to make sure that this isn't a long-term event for us and for our citizens.
All right. Thanks very much. When will this start again?
We're, we're already doing it.
Okay.
And, and we'll also team with public works if they need a little assistance and we can help them as well.
All right. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
That's it. No one has signed up for citizens to be heard, so we're ready to go. We're Jared. Thanks, everybody.[1774.99]